I can't, since it's a partisan election. You can't vote in the primaries unless you're Republican or Democrat. I believe in so, did you?
No, not yet. I'm still trying to study other candidates.
And I don't blame them.
I hope for it.
It's like really not got a lot of information.
We have to Google that research.
I didn't say anything. That would be ridiculous.
No. No, no, no. It was. Personally, what is that? That's it.
Personally, you need to look at two minutes. About was on here.
Yeah. It was Kelly.
And they had a lot of samples, but still we need to have three minutes. That's what we got.
Well, yeah, it was, yeah.
Two minutes, you can't let yourself too much.
Again?
What?
I like the setting.
No, you're.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Better room.
Oh, my gosh. That's not one thing that's a good. That's horrible.
Good evening, welcome to the July 24th regular city commission meeting. Start out with the pledge of allegiance, followed by side of meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is proclamation for National Farmers Market Week. I have Patty Schermer here. Whereas Leavenworth Farmers Market offers consumers farm-fresh, affordable, convenient, and helpful products such as fruits, vegetables, cheeses, herbs, flowers, baked goods, meat. And whereas farmers markets serve as an interlinked link among urban, suburban, and rural communities, affording farmers and consumers the opportunity to interact. And whereas Leavenworth Farmers Market offers electronic benefits, transfer technology for use by supplemental nutrition assistance program, the SNAP program, recipients in redeeming their benefits, offers opportunity for senior citizens participating in the Senior Farmer's Market Nutrition Program to redeem their checks, and provides unsold produce to community-free food programs. And whereas the United States Department of Agriculture strongly supports and promotes the development, operation, and expansion of farmers markets and other direct-to-consumer marketing activities for agricultural producers, providing them with marketing opportunities. Now therefore, I, Mark Prizinger, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, do hereby recognize farmers markets and the contributions farmers make to the daily life in America, giving notice to our citizens that the week of August 5th through 11th, 2018, has Leavenworth Farmers Market Week. And we have Patty Schermer here representing the farmers market. And for those of you, I think most of you have probably been downtown, Wednesdays 3:00 to 6:00, Saturdays 7:00 to noon approximately. And just, we have a great farmers market, great location, amount of business they do, amount of fresh produce that you can buy there, just unbelievable. I'll give it over to Patty. Congratulations. Please head forward.
Thank you, everyone. I've been a member of the Leavenworth Farmers Market for, this is our eighth year. It is a wonderful community of people. One of the many rewards that I get from it is the interaction with our cities here in Leavenworth and Leavenworth County. A lot of our military folks, when they first arrive in Leavenworth, one of the things that they do is check out the farmers market. We have notifications on our website asking, where are you? What are your hours? And most recently, in the last couple of weeks, since the new Command and General Staff College students are here, we've seen a great outpouring of them. Our produce vendors have donated almost 2,500 pounds of fresh produce to Catholic charities here in Leavenworth that's been distributed to several families in the area. That's pretty awesome. We also support our senior citizens with SNAP benefit programs and things like that. We try to have some interactive activities for our young people. We have an observation beehive coming sometime in the next few weeks, which always draws a lot of attention. So, you know, if you haven't visited the market, please come do so. I think we have one of the best markets in Kansas, if not in the entire nation. And we do, as a whole, appreciate the support that we get from you, Mr. Mayor and the city commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, old business consideration of the minutes from the July 10th, 2018 regular meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, changes, or comments?
Not that I could see.
I'm sorry?
Not that I could see.
I don't have any comments or questions.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the July 10th, 2018, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion on a second to approve the minutes from July 10th, 2018, regular meeting. Again, voting, Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passes 4-0. Before we go forward, new business, I forgot to mention something at the beginning. I want to congratulate Commissioner Bauder. She was married this week and welcomed back.
Thank you.
We got to mention that at the beginning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We making time out of your busy week.
So, real blessing. Thank you.
New business, citizens' participation. This part of the agenda is reserved for people who care to address the commission or present petitions to the city clerk. Anyone here care to address the commission? If so, I ask you to come up and identify yourself.
Melissa Tinsley, I live at 1619.
Yes, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't. I don't.
My name is Melissa Tinsley, and I work, I live at 1619 Sixth Avenue.
Okay.
My name is Burton Young Henderson, and I live at 321 Vine Street.
My name is Charles C. Filbert, and I think I've stated my address before for the record. All three of us have the same message, and I have it wrote down.
Okay.
So, bear with me here, because it's all out of order, because that's kind of how I roll organized chaos here.
Okay.
So, I'm aware that the city is planning a study session here soon regarding the city's current mosquito control practices. I'd like to just take this moment to speak about an article recently ran in Leavenworth And it states that the Kansas Department of Health and Environment reports that northeast Kansas, which includes Leavenworth County, is currently at moderate risk for West Nile virus infections. I'm not an epidemiologist, but I would not want these, this report to, oh, hold on, I'm lost my spot here. I don't want this report to affect your guys' decision on the method of mosquito control in the city of Leavenworth. So, I'd like to just make a few things clear about West Nile virus, just so you guys are aware. West Nile virus does not spread from person to person through mosquito bites. The last confirmed case of West Nile virus in the county of Leavenworth was in 2015, and there was only one case reported that year. Eighty percent of cases go unreported because the symptoms are so mild that you don't even know you have it. Only one in 150 of 150 reported cases require hospitalization. And from 1999 to 2016, there have only been 30 deaths in the entire state of Kansas contributed to West Nile virus. For comparison, there's an estimated 28 deaths every day that's contributed to drunk driving. So, you know, just compare those two numbers there. But I think that we have already established that fear or risk of disease is not the reason behind regular routine spraying for nuisance mosquitoes within the city of Leavenworth. So, I have some questions regarding this high citizen demand, because I don't want them to get lost in somebody's inbox. So, how is the city tracking these demands? You know, whenever someone calls in, are they going to individual, or are they going to a specific department? Is that individual or department then mapping where these complaints are coming from to get a better idea of where all these high numbers of mosquitoes are at? If there is found to be a high number of calls from a certain area, is someone then sent to that area to investigate the reasons behind all the mosquitoes? When someone does call or email to report large amounts of mosquitoes, what's the typical city response? Are they given information on how to, how they can prevent mosquito breeding sites, how they can help protect themselves and their families from mosquito bites? And then also, I'd like to know what steps are being taken if someone is found to be in the city's, in violation of city ordinances regarding accumulation of stagnant water. And this ordinance, in my interpretation, can be found in Chapter 54, which is titled Health and Sanitation. And then that can also be found under Sections 54 through 67, and it's number 10 in there. A paragraph above that, there's another ordinance that states a nuisance is also making it uncomfortable to be in your own yard. So, if my neighbor has a large amount of standing water that's breeding sites for mosquitoes, that could potentially be a city ordinance violation as well. And I would also like, again, for the city to publicly disclose the annual cost that this spraying is costing citizens each year. Because, let's face it, if it worked, we wouldn't have mosquitoes anymore. So, another thing that I would really like to clear up is a common misconception that just because someone is anti-spray does not mean that that person or group is pro-mosquito. It just simply shows that we are aware that there are better, more effective, less hazardous methods of mosquito control, and these methods include surveillance, eliminating breeding sites, public awareness, and biological controls, which include larvicides and natural predators. So.
Thank you. Ma'am, I, just to give you an update on a couple of things. I know the city manager's been in contact with the entomologist at K-State, Doctor, I don't quite remember his name, but I think he's the top entomologist in the state.
What is his now? I'd like to know.
I don't know right now. And maybe, I'll pass over the city manager here a little bit. He is, he has been in contact with us, he is doing some research, and he is going to come to a meeting. We don't know yet when, because of his schedule. So, and the city manager can tell us a little bit more about that. He is an expert in the field, and he doesn't have a dog in a fight either way, he just knows that. We definitely want to hear from him, and we'd like to hear from him as soon as possible. On your other questions you ask, on different things, I would ask that possibly set up a meeting with the city manager to figure out that. There's a lot of things involved in what you're requesting, and he can give you some advice. But Mr. Kramer, maybe you can talk a little bit more about what I just said.
Yeah, we reached out, a number of places directed us to Dr. Jeff Whitworth, who's an entomologist at Kansas State. He has a whole team of entomologists in his department. His whole department, or at least some members are looking at what the city currently does so they can evaluate that and have that information. And then somebody from that team, from the K-State Entomology Department, potentially Dr. Whitworth, maybe somebody else, will be here probably in August. They're very busy, and we're trying to schedule around them. But I actually corresponded with them today, and we're still sort of on track to have somebody here in August.
Great. I'd also like to say too, someone had mentioned that they thought that maybe there was trapping and testing of mosquitoes taking place on Fort Leavenworth. I have been unable to confirm that, so that might be something to look into, if maybe we could tap into those resources, because that would be a more localized, because the way I'm aware of it right now, the closest trapping and testing site is in Topeka, which Topeka mosquitoes are not Leavenworth mosquitoes. It's going to be a completely different ballgame between those two.
I have a question about the article.
Yes.
Was the article last week? Was it an opinion piece?
I saw it today. It was a report that I saw on their Facebook page today and also on their website. I'd be happy to send you a link through your email.
I think it was on, in the weekend edition, wasn't it? Weekend edition on Sidebar, was it?
Oh, okay.
I, I think it's.
I'll get the papers.
From the KDHE?
It was a report from Leavenworth Times.
No, I know, but did they give credit to Kansas Department of?
I don't recall. But I've been tracking the.
It says Kansas Department of Health and Environment issued updated West Nile virus warning levels Friday for all of the state.
Yeah, that's what, like KDHE.
Oh, I would like to mention too, I forgot to mention that there have been no human cases of West Nile virus in the state of Kansas this year, and of all the mosquitoes trapped so far this year, none of them have tested positive for West Nile virus. So, I'd like to add that too.
Can we find out about the fort, if they're trapping or anything? Would that be through the garrison, or what?
It'd be the garrison, yeah. It'd be the garrison.
We could maybe find out, but if they're not willing to share that information, it's not our information to share.
Right, okay. Oh, I see, yeah.
I mean, if the request goes to them and they decline to provide that information, I'm certainly not going to share information if they're not. It's not my information to share.
Okay.
Well, once again, I'm sure you'll know, but when Dr., is it Whit, what'd you say? Whitworth?
Whitworth is my contact.
He's the.
I don't know if he's the entomologist that's going to come. I don't know if he's the head of the department, but he's a.
Very senior bug man, case.
Yes. Knows what he's talking about.
I've spoken with him as well.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, ladies? Thanks for being here.
Thank you, guys. Thank all of you.
Anyone else care to speak?
Yes.
Please, yes, oh, yes, ma'am. Please state your name and.
My name's Ramona Price.
Please come up to the.
My name's Ramona Price.
Yes, ma'am. And address?
92 Woodmore Court, Leavenworth.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I am having an issue with my dog.
Your dog?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He was picked up on the 15th for running at large, not his first offense. But apparently, he lunged at the officer. He's not bitten anybody, he's not harmed any other animals, and they are trying to classify him as a dangerous animal. He's a pit bull. I think they're doing this for the breed and not the dog. I contacted an animal behavior stat of Lawrence for an outside opinion. He contacted Animal Control last Thursday. The officer there said he would have to speak to his lieutenant and see if they would allow him to do that.
Allow him to do what?
To evaluate my animal.
Oh, okay. Oh, this person.
Right.
Yes.
And so far, he told him that, well, I'd have to ask my lieutenant and see if they will allow it. I go to court on Thursday. As of today, Ethan, the animal behaviorist, has still not heard anything from Animal Control. I feel that I should have a right to have my dog evaluated by an outside person, and I think that Animal Control is dragging their feet. I've been nine days without my dog. He's being kept in isolation. When he's gotten out before and I've gone to pick him up, and I'm on Control, oh, he's a sweet dog, he wouldn't hurt anybody. So, now all of a sudden, this cop says, well, he lunged at me, so he's dangerous. I have the equipment to build an enclosure for him, which I'm going to try and get done before I go to court. The behaviorist told me not to go and see my dog because it would cause undue stress on him and me to go in and see him and leave him there. Is there any way that we can light a fire under Animal Control to let him see my dog?
I, what I'd like to do is direct city manager, Mr. Kramer, to work with Animal Control and PD, and could you follow up with Ms. Price on this?
Sure. It'd most likely be a judge's determination.
Okay. Go ahead. Ms. Waters.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of any requirement. I mean, this sounds like this is an action, but it certainly would be a request that could be made to the judge as well, and I think the judge would have the authority to allow that, to order that happening.
I cannot go on my dog's behalf and order an independent study on him. So, I go to court this Thursday, I go to trial. So, I have to wait another week or so while the jail fines add up on my dog.
I'm not aware of any requirement in the ordinance that you release the dog for anything on that, you know, prior to a court case pending.
Anything that you want to follow up on, Mr. Kramer, with the chief, or Animal Control, or does that kind of state where we are right at this point?
I think that's probably where we are at this point. You know, I won't say anything that Ms. Price hasn't, but this is an animal through my research who has had numerous citations. Tom Dawson, the charges were recommended or brought forth, and it's the city prosecutor who determines whether a dangerous dog charge is brought. It's not the officer who determines that, it's the city prosecutor.
Okay.
And he has reviewed this and did find that the dangerous dog charge is warranted. So, that's another check on, you know, the officer's determination.
Mr. Kramer, can I ask you a question? What is a prosecutor's experience with animal behavior?
I can't speak to the prosecutors. He's been on the case. Criminal cases.
About eight, nine years. And that, you may be right, Ms. Price, but I don't want to say there's nothing we can do, but for the most part, we don't, we cannot direct a city prosecutor to, to go, to make any determinations one way or another.
If they're.
He has to do it based on his professionalism, and then he takes it to the judge, and the judge will make the final decision. And the question may arise, you know, what, does the judge have any animal behavior expertise? And maybe at that point, I don't, if you can bring it up.
And I have an animal behaviorist wanting to do this, and I'm being shut down every time I turn around. So, if we have all these ordinances against dogs, why is there none on cats? They climb on people's cars, they tear open trash, but they can do.
I don't disagree.
They can do something.
I'm not going to say I don't disagree. I completely understand, yeah. I don't know that, and I could be wrong, and maybe Mr. Waters knows, he happens to be on the city commission and city council in Prairie Village. I'm sure you have dog ordinances, but I don't know of anyone, any city that has cat ordinances.
I'm not familiar with any, other than the restriction on the number of pets that you can have. I haven't come across any dangerous cattle, you know.
Not even.
Cat is hard.
Or any cattle. I've not come across any, so, I mean, I could see that there could be some if, you know, if there are, if just any animal that's allowed to run, used, loose. But I'm not familiar with anything that's specific to cats.
I think cats throughout this country get a free pass compared to dogs. I understand what you're saying. I've had cats and dogs, I just have a dog now, but cats, they roam much more freely than a dog does.
And I just recommend, ask the question to the judge, what would classify his dog as being dangerous? Would they have to bit someone, or pose some type of criminal threat? I would ask those questions specifically and see what he says.
The things that I have looked up on, when they had to have bitten either another person or another animal to classify them as dangerous.
Your city code defines an aggressive animal, I'd looked up, as any animal that without provocation exhibits aggression or combativeness towards a person or another domestic animal, when it is not upon the property of the owner, harbor, or keeper, whether or not said person or animal is attacked, bitten, or scratched by the aggressive animal. So, it's the showing, the ordinance describes aggression as the showing of aggression.
Yeah, not necessarily. It doesn't have to have bitten.
Right, without provocation.
Okay. And also, a friend, what is, what is running at large classified as?
Off your property, off your property unleashed. I'll ask the attorney.
Well, a friend of mine, the reason I'm asking this question, is that she got cited a couple of years ago, her animal was running at large when they were inside her fence, and they deemed that the animal was running at large because it was out of her house. I can't address that.
I can't address that. That's something from, that the court must have done. We, we, the city, don't do that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get some clarification before Thursday and make my voice heard.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Price. Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to business contracts and agreements. Considered 2018 sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration contract with Line Weaver Construction.
Public Works Director Michael Donald will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a contract brought to you for the 2018 sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration work. Just to, a bit of background, we've been talking a lot the last several months about stormwater runoff. This is the other kind of water. This is water ends up down at the treatment plant where it's processed and released into the river. The project that we have is an ongoing series of work where we are seeking to reduce the amount of groundwater or other water from roof drains and such that gets into the sewer system and ends up at the treatment plant, because all that water has to be treated. And at some point in the semi-distant future, the city will need to build a new wastewater treatment plant to meet new regulations. The more of this water that is removed from the system, the smaller the plant can be. The city has been working, I think this is the fourth year or so, of a focused inflow and infiltration reduction program. We did find that two things are working against us, getting a lot, a lot further along in it. One is, as the economy has improved, prices have gone up, and the area in which we are working, which is north of Seneca, south of Metropolitan, east of, I think Broadway, or to Fourth or Fifth Street, the pipes are in such terrible shape that they cannot be repaired by a lining or other less expensive method.
How old would you say those are, on average? Over 100?
Over 100, possibly 120, 130. There are some of the, generally speaking, the old sewers in Leavenworth are in the northeast part of the city. So, the city is working our way basically from north to south in that area, and we have plans prepared by our engineer and sent it out for bids. We did receive three bids for the work, and the lowest bid was from Line Weaver Construction. And their bid was sufficiently low that the alternate bid, which was additional, essentially more work on the same line, go a little further, which was bid by all of the bidders, false, essentially within our funding range, and we'd recommend that the city commission approve Line Weaver, construct the project in the alternate bid in the amount not to exceed $475,564.
Mike, what's the depth of most of these pipes?
This part of town, 15, 18 feet, we've seen them as deep as 20. I have no idea how they built them back in the day. That's the topic of conversation in our office.
And a lot of this work is in alleys, and it's 15 to 18 feet deep. And when you go down there, and Mike, you can talk about the connections to the pipes. It's not just the pipes that are disintegrating when we dig them up, it's the connections to all the laterals.
Right. So, we reconnect all the services to the individual houses. We don't charge people for that. There is, we do some dye testing to make sure that the houses where they're connected to, because when the sewers were laid out, there were, about every 12 feet, there's a connection. But essentially, with the city being 24-foot lots, you're only using one of those connections. And oftentimes, properties that were owned by perhaps one owner or one builder, they would have one connection and have four or five houses connected together. So, we have to make sure we know where each house comes from. We do miss one once in a while, but we're getting pretty good at determining what house is connected where.
And these streets get closed during this work?
Most of this will be in the alley.
In alleys.
There may be some street closures associated with this. Typically, if we have to cross, like Seventh Street or something, I don't know if we're in that, in this case, but most of this work is in the alleys.
And we did some work last year, was it up in, up in, like Kiowa?
Yes, sir.
South, across Ottawa, was that a sanitary sewer?
Yes.
So, we've done a lot of work in the northeast. This is where most of the money goes in this project, because that's where the old infrastructure is, and we have to, we need to fix it.
That's correct. I believe this is the third year of this investment of inflow and infiltration dollars. And this money comes from the sewer rates that are paid citywide to focus on this particular type of problem.
How many more years do you expect, specifically in the north part of Leavenworth, probably more sort of northeast, do they go through four more years?
I would say possibly, at least in a broad sense, this work is never done.
Yeah, okay, then it might be fair.
But we are working our way through the northeast part of Leavenworth, which identified as, I think, the second worst collection. You can categorize it as like gallons per square foot per day sort of thing. We worked initially, I think, south of Spruce and west of 10th Avenue, and then we moved up into this area, and it just, we got locked down with just the condition of the pipes.
Will any residents be without sanitary sewer service for any length of time?
Possibly.
One in a day?
Possibly portions of a day, but usually they're reconnected same day.
Okay. Not, no one's going to be out for two or three days or a week unless something crazy happens.
Unless something crazy happens. And if somebody finds that that's happening, they need to let our inspector know that they have that problem, and we'll. A lot of these houses have their own set of sewer problems, from the house outside to the alley, that are not problems that we're going to address.
Yeah.
They have trees, or they have broken down cleanouts, or that sort of thing.
Mike, can you talk about the EPA's interest in this process?
Yes, sir. One of the things that the EPA looks at, because to operate a wastewater treatment plant, you have to have a permit from the state, which essentially goes back to a permit from the federal government. One of the things that is expected of anybody that operates a wastewater plant or a city that operates one is that you properly maintain your system, that you have to show that you have resources invested in the system, the personnel, the cleaning truck that we recently purchased, and that we have funds to repair problems as they occur, and that we are upgrading and repairing infrastructure, pursuing inflow and infiltration like this. Back in the heyday of the grants program in the 70s, the federal government provided a large amount of funding for plants, so they were very focused on making sure that they weren't giving grants to drink groundwater or groundwater. Back in the heyday of the grants program in the seventies, the federal government provided a large amount of funding for plants, so they were very focused on making sure that they weren't giving grants to drink groundwater or groundwater. But there is, they have, they have a book, and it's got a rule of thumb in how many people you have, how many houses you have, how much money you ought to be putting into your wastewater system. When they were here five years ago, they did not say that we were putting too much in, they asked, we just, we talked about what we do and how we do it, and I think they would like to see the city put additional funding into inflow and infiltration or general infrastructure upgrade, but it was not something they found to fall for.
I've got a question. What's the difference between the type and/or amount of work between the base bid and the alternate bid?
It's, I think, between two more manholes, just continuation of a line route. Generally, you kind of replace these things from the, the low end toward the high end, and we, now that we've been up there for two or three years, we know about what it costs, and we don't want to have a bid, a base bid project come in over our estimate. So we thought, well, we think, we, we know we can get this much done, we hope we can get some more done. It's just an extension, like two more manholes on the same line, go a little further, about three hundred feet or something.
And I certainly understand the concept of, you know, awarding the contractor the low bidder, but there is a difference of about a hundred and eighty thousand between the city's engineers' base bid estimate and the, and the bid that Linea Weaver Construction came in with, so I'm, what, what's the, what's the explanation for that wide difference?
Well, there's, there's probably some cat psychology involved in this. The, the bidders, they, they, they have a lot of things that go on in their business that we do not know about, and if they are very, very busy, they will bid projects at a higher amount of money than to make it worth the while to hire more people or purchase more equipment or rent more equipment. The number that is shown here is based on the bids that we received the last two years, at four hundred seventy-seven thousand. Our discussion with bidders is that the fact that this summer's been so dry, they're all caught up with a lot of work, and that this is a good project for all of the bidders, that I believe they all came in under our estimate, that they can do this fall, get it out of their life, make some money, and then bid a new group of projects somewhere in the spring. That is the, the explanation that I have, I have to give you, because that's how this was calculated.
There were like...
I'd, I'd add one more thing, there are certain companies that do certain work more than others. Sometimes you'll see, just for an example, Lexico would come in a hundred thousand below on a paving project, because that's really their wheelhouse. Sometimes, I'm not saying they can't do an excellent job on this, Linea Weaver, this is the, they've gotten it every year.
I think so.
So this is the type, this is right in their wheelhouse, so sometimes they're able, they have the machinery and the expertise and the equipment, so that, there's a lot of factors in the bid practice.
So they wouldn't have to contract as much?
Not necessarily, yeah, there are just so many factors in why bids come in where they come in.
And they've, they've suffered a learning curve getting to that point. John Will with Linea Weaver's been here this evening, if you have questions of him. But the, yeah, Lexico generally doesn't bid sanitary sewer work, but I think they've got some new management trying to steer the company, and they, they chose to bid this, which we were surprised to see that bid from them. It was also, it looks like it was high enough that if they, if they rewarded the bid, that they would, the pain would be worth the, the gain.
Yeah, okay.
Is anyone here from, did you have more questions, Mr. Will?
No, just, when they, when these contractors put in, did they just put in their bid as far as price, or are they, did they tell us, the city, I mean, I saw the, the spreadsheets and everything, but did they tell us how they're going to do the work? In other words, did they give us a, like a technical proposal, or is it just?
Well, they have to meet our standard specifications, it has to be properly, the right pipe pack has to be properly compacted, there's a traffic control plan.
Right.
But they don't tell us, we're going to have two of these pieces of equipment and three of those, unless we ask for that, but even so, we can't really tell them how to do the work unless there's an absolute technical reason for it, like in the Riverfront Community Center. There is a specific sequence of things you have to do, or you have a real problem with the building. So we leave the, kind of the methods to the contractor, we inspect them to make sure that they're, however they choose to install it, that they, that it's done safely and it's done correctly. Some contractors will use a trench box, other contractors will simply dig a larger, safer trench, depends on their expertise and equipment that they have.
Any other questions? Anyone from Linea Weaver here care to speak? Hey, John, come on up. Want to speak, Mr. Will? You can sit there at a mic, or you can go, watch, sit by Mr. McDonald.
Good to see you, John.
Go ahead and identify yourself, sir, just for the...
My name is John Will, I'm project manager with Linea Weaver Construction.
Can you speak a little bit from your end on what we've been talking about?
Well, you all nailed it. We've been burning up work like crazy, and we're bidding everything that comes out, and we have people that are really good at working in alleys. We've had the same guy at least two, two years up there, and we've hopefully got it figured out, and this one will go the same way the last couple have gone, where we've been able to move right along.
So based on this, it looks like you're going to start right after Labor Day, and you're going to finish right after Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Approximately.
But is, is the, are the efficiencies that you're, I mean, in terms of your bid versus what the city was estimating, is those efficiencies really with your labor and the techniques that your labor uses, or is it with materials that are going, the quality of the materials that are going to be used? What, I mean, because there's, there's one light item here, for instance, on the eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer, and I, and our estimate was a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and Linea Weaver came in at seventeen thousand four hundred, so it just, it just raises a question in my mind in terms of how you can, you know, whether that's labor, or whether that's material, or what, what is that?
Well, it can't be in material, because the city spec requires
Okay.
That certain type of pipe, you know, SDR twenty-six, and you can't vary from it.
Okay.
If you put in a lighter pipe, it might smash.
Right.
So as a contractor, we don't want to come back and mess with an alley again, it's too much work. So it's that, we just feel like we can get out there and do it quicker.
Okay.
We know how to do it, and we've had, we had some bumps over the years, I think Mike would agree, where
Okay.
We thought it was going to be, everybody thought it was going to be fifteen foot deep, and ended up being twenty foot deep, and once you get that all hammered out, then, and they, they gave us, I think this is the best set of plans we've seen for
Okay.
For this, and it, and it lets you see the depth better, so we were a bit tighter.
Yeah, I was just looking at some of these light, light items that were...
Now that you bring it up, Commissioner Perez, I'm looking at that too, and looking at this, I'm al- almost wondering, somebody added a zero on the engineering estimate, because everybody's at, you know, twenty dollars, ten dollars, somebody said a hundred and seventy dollars for PVC pipe, item number six, something foot diameter sanitary sewer manhole, we've got a two hundred and twenty dollars a unit, Linea Weaver quoted twenty dollars a unit, someone else quoted ten dollars a unit, then Lexico put it a hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah, that's the one, that's the one I was talking about.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the biggest piece of the whole action.
Right.
And we do pay essentially by quantity fused, there's a few lump sum items in there for things like traffic control and such, but we pay by the, typically by the foot for pipe installed ultimately, for the pipe and the material. There are some ways that contractors will shift amounts around in their bids to try to maybe get paid a little more earlier, maybe the traffic control really is only going to cost them five thousand dollars, but they'll say, they'll put a bid item in and say for twenty thousand, and if you pay half of it, then they're ahead of the game a little bit. So there's lots of little games in, in that. We generally evaluate the bids on a, on an overall cost per project basis, and don't do a
Line item.
A line item by line item, although that is interesting, that's big enough that we should...
If that was quoted, if the engineer's estimate had been twenty dollars a square foot, they'd been right on with Linea Weaver's bid, but I don't, that's really getting down in the weeds. I don't know if they added a zero or not. I'm not on your part, Mr. Will, or...
Well, I'm not, I just think you need to, I would recommend diving deep into the rabbit hole when there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollar difference between the engineer's estimate and what we're, you know, eventually awarding the contract for. And you've answered my question, sir, I, I would, I'm concerned about the quality of the materials that are being used, and then you're, and just, you know, the techniques are the best practices that we get the best return on our investment, so that's why I brought up the questions, and I understand the concept of low bid, but there was this, not a discrepancy, but a big difference between what we estimated and what the bid came in for, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Will or Mr. McDonald?
No.
If not, I would get anything to add, Mr. McDonald? Mr. Will, do you have anything to add?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you, sir.
We will, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that this is project number twenty seventeen dash eight seventy-two, that we would approve the low base and alternate one bid received from Linea Weaver Construction not to exceed four hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars for the twenty-eighteen sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration project.
I second it.
Motion to second the accept Linea Weaver's bid in the amount of four hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars, begin voting, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is proposals for the solid waste disposal services.
Our city public works director will continue with this.
Thank you. This is an important change in the way the city has done business with solid waste. With me this evening, I have our operations superintendent Curtis Marks and our refuse foreman Stephen King, and also representatives from Waste Management Landfill on Johnson County. The city has collected solid waste in disposals for the residents of the city of Leavenworth since at least the nineteen fifties, and in that process, we have operated our own landfill, we have hauled it to other people's landfills, we have used the transfer station that the county provided. Recently, the county informed us that they were going to be substantially raising the rates that the city pays, and that all residents of the county will pay to use the transfer station, particularly the commercial customers, and it caused us to take a look at our disposal options, if we felt that that was where we should continue to go, or if we could use the equipment and the personnel that we currently have and haul our trash to a different place. We prepared, we prepared some specifications identifying the basic background of material that the city would dispose of, municipal solid waste, special waste, which is typically, in our case, is going to be grit from the wastewater treatment plant, and then the sludge that comes out of the treatment plant. And we sent those requests for prices out to several landfills, responses that we received were from Pam's landfill outside Lawrence, Waste Management landfill, generally known as the Johnson County landfill or Deffenbaugh landfill in Shawnee off of High four thirty-five. We received verbal comments from Leavenworth County that forty-five dollars a ton was the rate, and we did not receive any response from Hatchison. Staff worked to identify what we thought the additional cost would, I've worked with the finance director's office, we've communicated with the city manager, and the short version of the long story is, even with additional costs that the city will incur transporting solid waste to any landfill, it is still, at our best estimate, it will cost the tax, or the ratepayers of Leavenworth about two hundred thousand dollars less than if we went to the transfer station. The bid for solid waste from Waste Management was twenty-four dollars a ton for a one-year contract, compared with forty-five dollars a ton from, from the transfer station. We have reviewed, a basic review of the, the contract that Waste Management has prepared, attorney had a few questions that we need to follow up on, and this evening, we would ask that the city commission certainly ask staff questions that you might have about this recommendation, and if you feel comfortable moving forward, approve that the city manager sign the contract with Waste Management, once it's been fully reviewed with the city attorney and the city manager.
Again, what was the reason for the county raising it that much in one year?
It was explained, the county has a solid waste committee, used to have, you know, fourteen or sixteen members on it, they recently reduced it to less than half that, and they informed us at the meeting, I believe it was about three or four months ago, that the goal of the county was to have the transfer station operate on revenue received simply from tipping fees, and that was the reason for the rate increase.
Besides, I mean, if we did make a decision to no longer use the, it's the county transfer site, the one out on Gilman Road, how many, I mean, how, do we have any idea how they're going to be financially from a standpoint, do they have a lot of customers that besides the city that are going to be willing to pay this increase?
There's a, there's a number of commercial customers, and then there's residents, you bring in trash by the car loader, the pickup truck load, they do recycling, and several other services out there. Now, they have not talked to us about how they're, they're going to make changes, that's their transfer station, I mean, it's, it's county transfer station, it's not a city Leavenworth transfer station, so I don't think they're going to do.
Would you, what would you estimate, that we're sixty percent of the business, seventy percent? Are you on the Waste Management Committee?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's in the order of total tons, we're probably, we're probably half, and I think commercial, I think we're the largest commercial customer. I may be wrong, some of the consolidation that's happened, that, that may not be the case anymore, but we're certainly a hot, very high percentage.
And I may have missed the answer, because Ms. Bowder may have asked the question, but they decided to go from thirty-five dollars to forty-five dollars in terms of the increase in the rate?
Yes, sir.
Did, we have any, did they give us any, they didn't give us any basis for why that, you know, why didn't they go to forty, for instance, maybe forty dollars?
They said that's what they needed to operate the transfer station on the revenue from tipping fees.
Of course.
Go ahead.
So just say if they didn't increase the rate, would we still use the transfer station, or are we still going to, we plan to go into a different direction?
If, if the rate would have remained the same?
Yes.
The, the numbers probably would have come out closer to a wash, and in that case, our staff recommendation would have been to stay with the, the county transfer station. We take twelve thousand tons of trash a year, so a ten dollar rate increase, twelve to fifteen thousand tons, so.
Well, if they, if they had done a, like a five dollar rate, putting aside the sludge, because I think we take the sludge to ham, correct?
That's correct. Oh, with this case.
So, that, I didn't, but if they did a forty dollar rate instead of forty-five, it comes out to, I think it brings the, the analysis that you did, it brings the city's total down to about four hundred and eighty thousand, which is what we're, the analysis that you did for the, for waste?
Right, you can kind of rough it out exactly that way, if you do five dollars a ton, it's twelve thousand tons, that's sixty thousand dollars difference, and there was no discussion of that.
Right, no, no back and forth where we could maybe get them to lower the rate, because what I'm concerned about, and you, and you pointed out in your study here, is the wear and tear on the trucks, and how far they're going to have to, you know, go to the Johnson County, right, sort of over the Johnson County line, as far as the Waste Management...
Across the Kansas River.
Yeah, and, and you've pointed it out, I mean, and you've made some estimates as far as the, the increase in maintenance costs, and then fuel is always a wild card, so obviously you pointed that out, those are my concerns, and that's why, you know, it'd be nice if we could enter some type of verbal negotiation with the, with the county to see whether they'd be willing to maybe decrease the rate a bit, I mean, the fact that they haven't been corresponding with us is kind of strange.
And I think it's more of a, it's not necessarily a negotiated rate, it's either, it's a philosophical change of supporting it in part by a countywide assessment, or supporting it a hundred percent by tipping, so if they stayed at thirty-five, it wouldn't really make sense for them, from what I know of this philosophical change, to go to forty, because then it would still require this countywide assessment, and their goal was to get it...
There is a countywide assessment, is there not?
Yes.
I believe there, there is, but I believe it, it was planned to go away.
Yeah, so the, the forty-five is what's needed to go straight to, to survive just on tipping fees.
To make up the difference.
Yeah, and we did a little bit of calculation, or a full calculation, if, if we were to stay with the county, it would require a thirty-four percent refuse rate increase for Leavenworth trash customers starting January one.
Quick question, Mr. McDonald, I, I looked in my, no, I asked Mr. Perez to look too, I, I didn't see any county commission motion and vote saying, let's move this, but you're on the Waste Management Committee, so surely your Waste Management Committee discussed this and decided, is that, your Waste Management Committee opposed?
It was brought down to us from Public Works Director of Accounting, said here is the rates for next year. It was brought down to us from the Public Works Director of the county and said, "Here is the rates for next year."
Oh, you didn't, the Waste Management Committee didn't?
Didn't make the decision?
Didn't make the recommendation?
No, sir.
But the commission didn't vote on it either?
I don't know if they did or did not.
The researcher did. Oh, I thought the Waste Management Committee had made that recommendation.
No.
Another question, we have $24 a ton for one year, 23 for three years, 22 for five years, subject to a possible 3% max increase. Why are we going one year? Why not go for the full monty and get the best rate for five years?
There's a feeling that, um, we've not, we haven't done this in a while. It's a, it's a different change in operation. Um, and so a one-year, uh, we've gotten a good rate on a one-year, it's not a big difference, it's a dollar a ton, so it probably behooves us to, to take it through a full four seasons, um, and make sure it's still the right thing for us. Um, and if it goes well, uh, then maybe we would see if the, uh, we may, may go for a longer contract next time. But as a management issue, as an operational issue, I think one year's a pretty good, uh, time to, to try it.
What concerns me about that, and I understand
Right.
Uh, what you're saying, is now all of our cards are open. I'm playing poker, and you're seeing my cards. You know my option is $45 a ton. Now I'm at 24, so after one year, they say, "Man, we need to take you up to 3850," which is still gonna be lower.
Yeah, and I don't want to put myself in the, in, in the county position.
It's almost like a pilot.
But it's gonna be a big change over there too, so I don't know if it's, if, if that'll be pushed back, if there's
But your recommendation still is to do it for one year, not three years?
I think that's the smartest move on this.
It's kind of like a pilot project, so you don't know what's
Yeah, and it's not completely unknown. We go to HAMs, uh, we, we've, we've traveled this far before, we've done many test runs. Us, Curtis and Steve and his crew have really vetted this. This isn't a complete unknown, we know what we're doing as far as transferring into
We go to HAMs with different type of truck than we're gonna be going to this, this new one in Johnson County, right? I mean, it's
The HAMs truck, the sludge trucks are large dump trucks.
Right.
In the past, we used essentially these same type of trucks to haul our, uh, trash to HAMs for it. We did not haul to Waste Management for many, many years.
Okay.
They've never been our long-term regular disposal site. Uh, the issues that were identified to me in the past did not seem to be there, uh, for operational weight. That we did a 10-truck test drive to, uh, Waste Management landfill here over the last 30 days. And there were, there were no operational issues, and the times were very similar to going to HAMs, which was not always the case years ago. But the, uh, the trucks that, that do go to HAMs with the sludge are a little different truck. They're not, they're, they're straight dump trucks.
Right.
Uh, but we do believe, for a long time, we took the grit and special waste. I think sometimes it went to HAMs, and sometimes it went to Waste Management, I've lost track at this point. So we do have experience operating these trucks over the road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's, down the road, if this is the direction that we're going to go, if, uh, there may be the opportunity to look at, at lots of options. But I think first of all, we need to prove to ourselves
Right.
If we can do it, what are the actual costs?
Right.
Uh, there's plenty of places to pick this analysis apart, but I think it's
And it's for one year, it's for one year, I mean, that's what we just talked about. And, and I would agree, and, yeah, if you can histor, you'd see what happens in that one year in terms of maintenance? You have to make an estimate at this point. That's, that's my big concern, is just the wear and tear of the trucks, and then, um, and whether that would lead to having to, you know, purchase another truck sooner than we, you know,
Yeah.
Have projected, so. I'm comfortable with what you've recommended, but obviously, there are some trade-offs as far as the analysis, but
Yes, it is, and then, I know, uh, refuse staff would like to make the case for an additional person, but I'm not ready to go start with an additional person, we'll see how this actually works out.
Okay.
Is it county aware that we're considering this?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. McDonald? Sir, you're with Waste Man, please identify yourself.
Uh, Scott Cornell, I'm with Waste Management, Johnson County landfill.
Mr. Cornell.
Are you the one, uh, is your, did your office, or did you personally choose the
Yes, I did, I put the proposal together with Management, with Waste Management, correct.
So you don't know that if we come back next year, $45 a ton?
Well, I tell you, it, it, no, it won't be that.
We just did that in low smoke.
$45, it's a good, 38, like 3850, okay. But, uh, no, I mean, during the year, we can always look at it and negotiate if you want a longer-term contract too. So we could, we can come back if you guys, if it's working out like you want it to work out. There's not a problem with that at all.
What is your name again, sir?
Scott Cornell.
Cornell?
Cornell, like university.
Cornell.
Cornell, C O R, and E L O.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Cornell, or Mr. McDonald?
I think I've through all your stands.
Did you see anything on a test drive that caused you any concerns or issues?
No, no concerns or issues with us, no.
I've been in, uh, Deffenbaugh, I guess, Waste Management. Now, just give us about, how many acres is that? I mean, I'd say huge.
It's over, I guess, over 900 acres, and there's probably, I believe there's like 2047 or 2048 lifespan. With recycling, it could increase. I've got our landfills, Topeka's probably got 100 years, and up in Omaha, so recycling's reducing waste volumes. But Johnson County is one of the biggest landfills we have in, in Kansas. So we produce
Whole bunch of like D7 bulldozers that
Yeah, we have a lot of equipment out there.
How, how wide are those blades?
There's wires, yes, there's room.
They're wider than the room, I know, I, it's just amazing what you see out there. Any other questions? Not, we'll take a, take a motion?
Uh, I'll go ahead and move that we approve awarding the contract for landfill services to Waste Management in an amount not to exceed $24 per ton as proposed?
I second.
Motion and second to award the, uh, contract to Waste Management in amount of $24 a ton. Again, voting for Mr. Brizwell.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, and does this start January 1st?
It's the plan, yeah. We, we have a few, uh, issues, uh, we need to iron out with the, the legalese of the contract, but we need to get that in place, uh, but it has nothing to do with the price, it has to do with, uh, just, just the contract.
Okay.
Well, I wish we could work with the county, but we've got to save our taxpayers money here.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell, thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Uh, next items are first consideration ordinances. First one is demolition assessments.
Our city clerk will handle the next two items.
Um, the first one is a first consideration ordinance to levy special assessments for demolition costs. Um, there are five different properties, um, on this one totaling $27,890. Um, just as a kind of background for the commission. Whenever the city does go ahead and demolish properties, you go through the, the process of looking at the properties, and it goes on the demolition list, and then eventually they do get demolished. Um, after they're demolished, um, the total cost has been incurred by the city, is then calculated. Um, an invoice is sent to the property owner. They have the opportunity to come in and pay for those costs. If they do not, then we go ahead and assess them to the taxes. Um, so some of them did come in and pay, and these are the remaining properties that have not paid those at this time. Um, a couple of those you see are, are lar, larger amounts, there's a couple of them that are $10,000. Those are larger homes, there's another one for about just under $3,600. That one was a garage only, so that's why that one's a lower amount. And then the next two, the one for $1,500, the one for $1,600, those are properties where, um, we began the process, um, of, um, shutting off the utilities and doing the asbestos, um, um, work on them. And then the one on Kickapoo, um, the property owner then took over and demolished, um, the, the structure themselves. So we still go ahead and charge them for the work that we did on the utilities and the asbestos. Um, and the next one, again, it's utility and asbestos work on that, and what was incurred by the city. And then that one, um, was removed from the demolition list by the commission, and the property was sold to a new owner. Um, but those fees had not been paid yet to the city, so we'll go ahead and assess those to the property as well. So those will get assessed to the 2018 taxes. So this is just the first step, um, uh, first consideration for that ordinance. Um, and then it'll come back for a second consideration, and then this will get certified over to the county clerk to get put onto the 2018 taxes.
Okay, any questions?
I just have a question in terms of, I mean, there's some people that end up, or entities not, not paying, right? And then they would, they would be brought to court for, I mean, in terms of they don't pay their property tax. I mean, we, we have a pretty good return rate in terms of getting this money back? I mean, just in general, I mean, what
Um, in general, I've, I've run the numbers before, uh, for the commission on what our return was for the previous year, and I, I apologize, I did not do that this year, I can do it before a second consideration, just to let you know.
That'd be good.
Um, but if they don't pay it, if the taxes aren't paid, then the county takes it over, and it's sold, um, at a tax sale.
On courthouse steps, I think you have been there, where's three years or five?
Okay.
Once you're in the rear, three years.
Okay, well, that's good.
And then if you, let's say you buy it for $10 on the courthouse step, sheriff's up there and slams down the gavel, you owe $10 plus the assess, the ta, the back taxes.
Back taxes.
Yeah, yes, okay. That's helpful.
Okay, is there consensus, move this one forward?
Yes.
Consensus. Uh, next item is, uh, nuisance ordinances, consensus.
And this is the first consideration for the nuisance, for the nuisance abatement cost. Um, the attachment on this is quite a bit longer, we have quite a few more properties on there. Um, and this, um, again, these are, um, off the charges and, and costs of, um, any mowings or any other nuisance abatements that the city has had to do, maybe removing a tree, maybe removing, um, debris from a property, things like that, so it's not always just mowing, majority of them are mowings. Um, so that these are the costs associated, um, with the city, and then the administrative fees. Um, some of these, uh, the list is consolidated, um, for the total cost of each property. Um, so if you see something that's a couple thousand dollars, it's several mowings that have accumulated to that cost. Um, but when we send it over to the county for the assessment, they, we reduce it so that they're just seeing the one total on there. Um, again, um, this list represents, um, a consolidation of the, the fees from July 1st of last year, because we can only assess that to the taxes one time per year. Um, in the month of August, we have a, a deadline that the county clerk gives us, um, but we have to have them turned in so it can be put on for the taxes. So, um, we cut it off July 1st, just so we have time to get all the numbers together, get every, all the approval process done, so that we can get it turned in to them for, um, for the taxes. So these are things from July 1st of last year through July 3rd of this year. So this is a total accumulation of one year's worth of nuisance assessments. And then this year, we, we've cut it off as of Ju, July 3rd. So then we'll start accumulating, um, uh, costs for any mowings or anything for the remainder of the year. And then we go and we put a, um, lien against the property at the end of the year, just so if there is a transfer of the property before it goes to the, um, taxes the following year, we have the ability to, um, make a buyer and seller aware that there is a lien on the property and needs to be sold before the property changes hands.
Any questions?
And this is the process that we've been using for, for years, or?
For years, yes.
Nothing new, right?
Nothing new.
Okay, it's a statute.
It's a statutory requirement, yeah.
Three or four years ago, we raised, uh, the first time we mowed, yeah, cost of mowing, plus a hundred, second time, $250, third time, $500. You can see some small properties here that have that $2,800
Okay.
Dollars in mowing charges. Most of those are the
Right.
You know, trying to convince them that they should mow their own lawn, it'd be much cheaper for them.
Right.
So, we have some, obviously, some repeat, uh, names that we see quite often on this list. Any other questions?
No.
Do we have a consensus, move this one forward?
Yes, yes.
Okay, next item is consent agenda.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do that here in about, uh, 15 seconds. Uh, the only, the only thing that I would say, talking about the, uh, the solid waste, uh, management program, we, we did have a payment in there, or a claim, an expenditure for the Leavenworth County solid waste, and that was the, the entry, and that was for $78,000. So I was just wondering, is that like a quarterly payment, or that would be in terms of the, it's an expenditure of like $78,000 for, Leavenworth County's solid waste? So I was just wondering, that's not, that's not just a month's
That's an accumulation.
Accumulation.
But it's not a quarterly total.
It's some, some
Right.
Accumulation, but it's not every quarter or anything like that?
Right, right.
Okay, well, I, I just thought it was interesting that it was there. I hadn't, so I figured it wasn't a monthly thing, because I haven't seen it on a monthly basis, but I don't know how, how long a period of time that, um, it covered. But I will go ahead and make a motion that the commission approve claims for July 7th, 2018, through July 20th, 2018, in the amount of $682,240.58. Net amount for pay number 15 effective July 20th, 2018, in the amount of $362,134.11. Includes police and fire pension in the amount of $11,572.36.
I second.
Motion and second to accept the consent agenda as presented, begin voting for Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes four zero. Uh, discussion among commissioners, Commissioner Bowder.
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Brizwell?
Nothing this evening.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, sir.
I have nothing, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Kramer?
Nope.
Mr. Waters?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williamson?
Yeah.
You've already spoken, Mr. McDonald. Take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.